...that they can put before the community for their feedback. So, part of this will be put out for community engagement. They're going to say, "Well, this is the idea that I have in mind and what do you think about it? Do you think this is something we should sustain? Do you think this is something we should initiate?" As much as possible, knowing that we're working within a tight budget, we're trying to have these priorities and issues be budget neutral where feasible. But this is what we're going to put before the community. Tell us what you think about the priorities that we've identified and if you think that this is sustainable or how do you feel about that. And we're also starting that engagement much earlier to allow the community the opportunity to give feedback before the budget is voted on, as opposed, you know, to March and April when things are already decided. And also to give central office the opportunity to attempt to implement the feedback that they've received. And next, we have the school budget engagement process that I touched on earlier. We really want to identify and streamline the process for school budget engagement. And part of that is starting that process a little bit earlier. One of the hamstrings on the school budget engagement process has been that we don't initiate that process until schools receive their allocations, which is usually at the end of January, early February. And then they have a pretty tight turnaround window to have their budget collaboratives and complete their SVPs and all these things associated with that. So, the plan this year, or part of the plan this year, which is again, still a work in progress, I'm just kind of giving a preemptive update, is that the schools would hopefully be, will be engaging earlier on discussion of priorities before they can get to the specifics of dollars. Not everything is restricted by knowing exactly how much money you're going to get. We realize there is a part of that. You may have a plan for something and then you realize you don't have the funding to do it, but that doesn't stop you from having some of the discussion with your committee members and understanding what their needs, warrants, and concerns are before you get into the budget development process. So, we're trying to start that conversation earlier as well so that, again, we're not squeezing too many things into the same tight window in the, in the early spring.
I have a question.
Commissioner Bondema, thank you. I think we had this kind of conversation last year, and I think, listening to your presentation, it's a little bit more clear. Now, when you go out into the, to the community, last year, we were, we were concerned about reaching out to areas that had not hit the opportunity, and we wanted the, more schools, more communities involved. Talk to me about how, when you go out there to talk to the community, the families, the staff, how are you going to go about doing that? You know, before we, I felt, and I think it was mentioned before, we weren't hitting enough communities, and we felt that some of the places that we were going, some people had a hard, difficult time getting to the meetings. What's the plan on that this year?
So, I'm going to go off script for a second. Part of that, last year, we had these engagements. We went to a number of different areas of the community, and we had, the turnout in some of these locations was minimal, and I know a lot of board members attended. And I think one of the things that we're really looking at very strongly this year is, is redefining what budget engagement means. And to a certain extent, I think even the word budget is a problem in budget engagement. The fact that we're discussing dollar figures that, you know, seem astronomical to certain people, we're discussing things that people don't feel touch, touch their everyday lives or their kids or their schools, I think, is an issue. And if people already have the preconceived notion that they're coming to something that's already determined, that they have no input into, then, again, maybe that's driving away some of the people who, who we're looking to get feedback from. So, I think this, for this to work, we have to redefine sort of what that engagement means and what we want out of that engagement and what our community needs out of that engagement, which is why, you know, we're, we're trying to take steps in that direction this year with incorporating, you know, the feedback earlier and giving the opportunity for real feedback, not just, you know, informing the community, here's what we did, but here's what you have an opportunity to participate in. But I think that's still very much a baby step. There are other districts where we've researched where, you know, they, they don't even use the word budget or finance. It's like, here's a block party, come get some ice cream. By the way, here's some numbers, you know, they, they kind of, they sneak it in. So, I, I'm not saying we have to go that radical necessarily, but I do think we have to expose ourselves to the, the possibility of maybe changing the framing for these conversations. And like I said, that may even start with just using the word budget. Maybe we don't call them budget meetings or we don't call them finance meetings. Maybe they're, like, we're trying to discuss this year, their priority meetings, their discussions about how things actually affect you, affect your schools, affect your community. The finances are a subset of that. It's how we make that happen, but the finances should not necessarily be the focus. They are the focus in terms of us being stewards of, of assets, you know, but they should not be the focus in terms of the conversation. I think that derails the conversation a little bit. It should be priorities, it should be needs, and it should be addressing those needs for the individual students.
I, I, I hear what you're saying right now, but one of the other issues I was concerned with using more community centers, using more locations, is what I was going, because we, before, and you guys made some changes, but we need to make sure that we use locations that's, that's, that families are able to get to easily.
Yeah.
Instead of, for example, we use certain schools like Poly.
Right.
And we use that all the time, we use Dunbar. We, but we didn't get areas where, that people coming from like Sher Hill, coming from Evans Village or Southeast. I was really concerned with having more locations where families can reach, because we're talking about late in the evening.
Right.
And, so, I'm hoping that we can have more locations and do the same thing you said, you mentioned, i- in a different way.
What we found, so, we, we did this, and I agree, and we did this in, in the spring and when we did the initial budget presentation, and you provided us with that same feedback. So, we said, "Let's spread it out." So, we took, you know, we divided the city into quadrants. We went to five different locations, and we did all of those, I think, except one in community locations. Like, we did one in the Waverly YMCA, we did one in the Bentaloo Rec Center, we did, you know, we did a number of different locations where, and we specifically avoided going into our school building, buildings, even though in a couple instances, they were right next door. We wanted to, you know, take that, that feedback and try to incorporate these meetings into the community. We had committee members try to promote those meetings. And, again, some of the, the attendance in those meetings was still not, you know, where the expectation would be. And, you know, I know we, we want to go away from using some of the same locations, but what we found also with some of these engagements is that there are locations that provide, you know, a larger audience than other locations, which is why we maybe tend to gravitate to some of those locations. But I know this is something that the FCE team in particular is looking holistically at and have provided a lot of insight and feedback on, and they do a lot of groundwork. You know, give them credit, they do a lot of groundwork with the community members and the different organizations within the communities and getting those communities involved and finding out from them where they're going to be and when they're available. So, it is something that we're trying to push. I just wanted to say that, you know, we tried it a little bit last year and we had not yet seen the results of that. And it suggests to me that maybe it's not just about the location, is, it maybe a portion of it is the message, maybe a portion of it is the advertising, maybe a portion of it is just, you know, people don't want to see me. I don't know. So...
Could you do us a favor, send to the board a list of, whichever way you want to do it, send us a list of where you're going to be.
Sure.
And so, we can know in advance, may, you know, and maybe we could make suggestions, maybe you might miss one location.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I hear, I'm, I'm coming to you, I see both of you. And that was a part, one of the questions that I wanted to ask in terms of a calendar for when some of the engagements will begin, because the, the months you're saying are pretty busy ones.
Yes.
And, and I think, you know, the things that you've said around the messaging and the fact that we're going to talk more about priorities versus just money.
Yeah.
But I do think we need to get that calendar out for folks if we want to try to do this, we were saying, November to like January.
Correct, yes.
And then I saw Commissioner Frank and Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Bondema, just a point of clarification, I haven't had a chance to distribute it to you yet, but we do have the locations of the budget engagements, and it's a Murvo, Highland Town, Dorthia Height, and Liberty Elementary.
Just those?
Yeah.
The only ones you were going to?
It's one of your four sessions, yes.
Those are for the priority discussions that we discussed for the central office budgets. There are separate engagement for the FSF, and like Commissioner Chinna mentioned, there are a number of other engagements going on during that point in time in November as well. So, some of it is restricted, or the number is restricted by the actual available dates. Thanksgiving and Christmas and some of those holidays that are taking place is really very tight for us to even find these four dates, you know, within that period.
Okay, thank you.
So, there's two categories of meetings, correct? There are the principal meetings with parents of the schools, and then there are these higher level meetings to discuss goals. Is that basically the two kinds of meetings?
Correct, yeah.
And, I mean, I just, just to push back a bit, I, I think nothing is more important, I should say, I'm expressing my point of view, that attending the principal budget meetings is critical, because 90% of the budget is positions, and whether you have two APs or one AP or an art teacher or a music teacher or three math teachers or you're teaching Algebra I, that's really what I would want to know as a parent. And, you know, at some point, you're hoping that the message, the larger message are not, are not changing every year. This, the CEO has set out its priorities, the blueprint is well-known, you don't want it to change every year. So, to some degree, it gets a little tired and old, and you're, it's, and I think, correct that, that priorities aren't changing. So, it, I did one of the five last year, and there were more staff there than there were people from the community.
Right.
And I just, you know, I think with, with time of staff limited and time of parents and caregivers and other people's limited, I think it's, it is not a given that more of these meetings produce better outcomes.
Correct.
And I, I don't, I don't know that you can blame it on lack of communication, because you've tried different ways to communicate, and I don't know if you can blame it on transportation. There are probably things that you can point to, but at the end of the day, is that analysis absolutely critical to getting more people out to these district-wide meetings? Of course, they have to happen, because not everyone, we can't expect everybody to know the blueprint. People might have been busy for the last two years and they're going to come out. But just having more in different locations, to me, is not necessarily the answer if we don't think people are going to come out.
You know, can I respond to? Okay.
Can we, that Commissioner Reed, then, whether the outside of conversation, right now, or if you're going to come to me?
I think a lot of us laughed when you said you need a hook. I think you do need a hook.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, it could be in conjunction with another meeting, but I don't know anyone that likes to go to a budget meeting.
Right.
So, it's, so it's a situation, it's, you know, how can I bring them in?
Just try.
And talk about the budget.
Correct.
So, you know, I mean, we laughed in jest, but I think it's pretty correct that there has to be a hook.
And, and I will say, I mean, I know the meetings you talked about last year, but the feedback that we did hear at those meetings was the fact that it was too late, and one, and a, and a big reason that folks didn't want to come was, there was a feeling it was a done deal.
Right.
And we were just giving people information that was already sort of completed.
Correct.
No, I totally agree, any meeting that I've ever had, like you just said, who wants to come to a budget meeting? But you do have to have the hook.
Yeah.
And a lot of parents, a lot of experienced, have different kinds of meetings, and sometimes you, you have to have a snack. Sometimes you have to have something that, I mean, parents are coming in in the evening with some bringing their kids and exhausted from working all day and want to get in. I think that sometime you have to think of what we can do to get them in there. But I'm not encouraging a lot more meetings, double it up on the budget meeting, but my concern has always been having a meeting where we say certain people, certain areas didn't show up and one or two people and sometimes none, only the staff. We have to figure out how we can have a meeting in an area that's not usually one of the regular areas. You're going to always have people at Poly. You're going to always have that Mount Washington, that Roland Park, they are going to show up. So, we have to figure out and get creative as to how we can get, have a meeting in an area with, with families that generally will not participate, but however, they really want to know what's going on with the, the budget that's related to their families, their children.
Right.
So, we just have to put our creative hats on and maybe have, whatever, something that will pull them in that's different than just saying, "We have a meeting at 6:00 and it's about budget." If I had kids and in a community, in, 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 in the principal announces it's going to be a meeting, and I got to feed kids and homework and all that, it, it would be difficult for me to get there unless they say they were serving a pizza or sodas or something. That's not difficult, that doesn't cost a lot of money, you know? And I think that once you say, "We have pizza and the kids got a room where they can sit," you know, I mean, it's been done and it works. So, maybe that's what we need to do to get out people, because we need to have people come to say, "I'm happy that you, you, you worked something out and I was able to participate." Because that's one of the big complaints is that they, it's even too late. And yes, transportation is critical, because many people catch, still catch the subway, the bus. We have those people at some time, a cab or Uber or whatever. So, we have to think about those people who do not have transportation, you know, so...
I, I want to really focus, I want to stress one thing that you did say, and that was around the school-community budget forums, because, I mean, I know we're, we're, we're really talking more around the, the larger one, looking at this whole district budget, but what are we doing to ensure that these are going to be meaningful meetings that actually, whether it's a meeting, I don't care how the school gets, gathers the data, but how are we going to ensure that this really is going to happen this year? Because that is one of the things that a lot of people say, "I never heard about it." Other people have said, "I was asked to come and sign a piece of paper that was already done." How are we going to ensure that this really is going to happen and have real input from, from the community?
Right. So, I touched on a little bit of that before, but I want to call out the fact that Dr. Santelis has tasked us at the end of the last budget process to have a cross-functional team, people from different areas of central office that will address, you know, these very issues, the issues on communication, the issues on community involvement. So, this task force is still underway and has been underway since the, the summer, and that is one of the, the things that we are currently working on. So, some of the dates that you've seen are a result of that, some of the planning that you've seen so far are a result of that. It is not yet complete, especially some on the school engagement side. So far, you know, speaking in broad terms, I can say, one of the things is sort of a train-the-trainer sort of model where the school principals, and we know, we know and have been able to identify specifically from feedback, schools where some principals do this extremely well. You know, they get a lot of buy-in on their budgets, they're very descriptive, they, they understand how to express it and get feedback in a way, and even deliver the bad news of not being able to do certain things in a way that has been very effective. So, understanding from them, how they communicate, and helping them help their peers communicate in that same manner. I will just flag, you know, part of the, the issues with that is that, that's dependent a lot as well on the actual funding that you have available. You know, in some schools, it's easier than other, because you have more money than in other schools, you know, or your, your community or demographic of your neighborhood is different from others. So, not everything translates. Second aspect of that is one of the things I mentioned earlier in terms of stretching out that timeline. I think one of the major roadblocks with that process, as you described it and, and as it's taken place before, is that we've given them a very short window of time within, within to have those engagements. So, they receive their allocations and then, you know, they're forced within like a week to have had those meetings and then to come in for their, their collaboratives, which is very unfair to the principals, because at that point in time, especially when we've had, you know, I'll use the word migrating calendar dates where, you know, because of one event or another over the last couple of years, whether some of them are funding issues, some of them are, you know, changes to the funding model, where we've had to move dates or move events, and it's made it very difficult for school leaders who don't know when they're going to get their dollars to schedule these meetings, to talk about their dollars. So, step one in that whole process for us, and when we discussed the budget timeline in, in finance, was to build a calendar we thought we could adhere to and to try and remove as many roadblocks to the, the movement or deterrent of, of those dates that we could in the budget development process. And, you know, not to go into too, too much detail, but some of that is just moving some of the things from where they sit currently in terms of the timeline. Do some of the processes have to take place when they take place? Are there more intelligent ways to kind of shift things ahead that can be done ahead? Is this always dependent on this? Or, you know, is it just, are we just doing it that way because it's been done that way before? So, addressing some of our core questions in terms of our development, I think, is allowing us more time to, you know, create those gaps and those, you know, to alleviate some of those timing issues for school, which helps on the front end. But we definitely have a lot of work to do in terms of determining what that engagement looks like and standardizing the engagement across schools. We really don't want it to be an exercise in compliance, where you're just checking the form and you're sending in the copies, but you're actually engaging and you can prove that you've engaged and that the committee members feel like they've been engaged.
So, one of the things I think might be helpful as follow-up with the board and, you know, commissioners should say, "So, if this is not what at least I thought I was hearing." I think that there is a level of view into what is shifting qualitatively, right? Not just adding on dates, not just extending calendars, but what is shifting qualitatively in the way that, one, school leaders and teams are actually able to communicate in real ways with their parents and families around what the priorities are in language as, you know, a- as was described, that is parent-friendly language, that is not just, "Here is the overall amount you have, it's down 14% from last year, these are the new figures when we take off the personnel." See, and I have people laughing already, because parents have sat through tech, technical ease at a school level, when really, I'm coming in and want to know, is my child going to have an art class next year?
Right.
Right? What does the after-school program look like, right? How much might it cost? How much of that cost is being absorbed by the school? What does it mean for class size, right? I mean, I'm just going through from, from a parent perspective, right? Those are the questions. And then I think part of what might help the board gain insight on the work that the working group has done is, is to hear at the qualitative level, what is the work that is shifting? What's the assistance schools are getting in communication, right? What's the support that they're getting in, yes, you're right, timing, but timing at a school level, it takes time to seed with families, the kind of information to get you ready to interact with a budget. And I think that's part of why people don't come out to budget meetings.
Right.
People don't come out to budget meetings, because there are large clumps of numbers. And until we break down what the numbers are at the level that a parent is experiencing, is gauging it by the experience of their child first, and then, then I care about the numbers, right? If you tell me, "These are the specials we're going to have," or "Not have," or "We have this choice," or "That choice," or "We thought we'd be able to," I don't know, "Do the school play this year, but we're not going to be able to, because this is what the budget is." So, the PTA then can say, "We're going to take on raising the money for that." That's at the level of the experience of the child. And so, I think, at least what I'm hearing from the board, is where are we shifting in our ability to engage at that level? That's, at least, that's what I feel like I'm hearing. Okay.
I want to ask, I guess this is a question for you, Dr. Santis. When we hire school leaders, we expect them not to be supermen and women, but we do expect them to have certain basic skills in communicating with parents, should be one of them. And I wonder, based on your, the hiring that we've done under, under your leadership as opposed to others, is there an expectation that school leaders really should have the skills and abilities to know how to communicate a budget to parents and facilitate the back-and-forth that really ought to happen before any budget is finalized? Is that not something we should expect from our principals and something that they could be evaluated on?
No, and I, I actually think it's a, it's a great question. I would say, very forthrightly, as it stands now, that is not part of the hiring criteria that is most prominent in hiring principals, right? There, you know, principals were, are asked kind of generally around their communication skills, right? Can you get up and, you know, address parents confidently and give them confidence in your leadership? But I think you're getting at a much more specific skill set and specialized skill set that not all school leaders have. I mean, I, I'll just be forthright about that. I do believe that John Davis, the Chief Davis, has been working on this when it was flagged last year, which is part of why I'm saying I think we need an update that's more precise about the kind of development, right? Like, what are the areas that ILEDs are working on? And one of the things that we said, because it's not a competency, that I would say we would specifically hire or evaluate around, and it's a great consideration to think about somehow pulling that out of the feedback that principals get. But it's one of the reasons why we talked about, is there a different kind of communi- set of communication supports, right? I've talked with, with the team about, are there ways that we can animate the budget process, right? Because there are things, there are complex processes that I don't understand, that with the right pictograph, right, I can access and then answer questions. And, and I think that part of it, to answer your question, that we realized last year, based on a lot of the feedback, is in fairness, we have not equipped school leaders to be able to do that. We tend to look for other characteristics first, and what you're raising is that we're going to have to develop more explicitly those competencies.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. I think we have some more follow-up, but thank you. Thank you for listening to the feedback from last year and beginning to take those steps to make this more fun.
Thank you.
Can't think of another word. Fun. Fun with funds, how's that? We did not have, there you are.
Cut down, funds with funds.
Give me my star for the day. We did not have folks who signed up. However, I do see a few people in the audience that don't look like staff, and so, I'm going to open an invitation if you would like to give us any, your feedback from the, either the presentation or ideas that you'd like us to consider moving forward. We will, we will follow the same format for the three-minute piece, but, so, you would just, if you want to speak, come and tell us who you are, and you're invited.
Just three things. Okay.
Come up to the table, let us know who you are, and we'll set the timer, please.
Hello, my name is Latoya Knighton. I'm a lead teacher at Bernard Harris Senior Elementary School, and I've worked in city schools since 2004. This is my first board meeting, so I'm excited to have an opportunity to, to share today, and I'm glad that the conversa-, I'm glad that these are the conversations you all are having. And it is certainly true that our parents don't want to attend board meetings, and they are overwhelmed many times with their responsibilities and having the lack of transportation or these locations being at places that are hard to get to. One thing that I have found in years that, that does help increase parent involvement and participation is making sure that we keep children first. So, if the children are engaged in plays, in skits, or some sort of presentation, even bringing out a moon bounce, something for the kids to do, that the kids are getting excited about, encourages the parents to continue to push to make it a priority to get to these meetings. And also, someone stated the use of the term budget and forums and finances, no, immediately ears are closed, nobody wants to hear. And it is, it is true that folks are like, when the decisions have been made, the papers have been signed, but if we, as, as a district, if we are ensuring that parents are truly feeling heard, and whether that be from the principal or someone else on staff, because a lot of times, principals are overwhelmed, they're busy, they're not having these conversations. But I've had an experience in which principals have delegated that person that has those relationships with those families and is able to communicate what the priorities are for the school and communicate the parents and families' needs back to the principal in the, in a way that they have, they are left feeling heard, that they'll come out and have the conversations. So, also, making sure that when we're getting the feedback from the parents, that they're able to see that what they see it mattered, it shows up somewhere else. When it doesn't happen, they, if they did show up the first time, we're losing them. They won't come back the next time, because it doesn't matter. Thank you.
What school did you say you...
Dr. Bernard Harris Senior Elementary.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, and thank you for coming, come back again.
I sure will.
My name is Douglas Barr. I'm a parent of three kids at Patterson Park Public Child School. I just wanted to reiterate, I think you guys were talking about the importance of the principals and communication. I think that's actually the most important part. The feedback I know from parents who have principals that are good at that versus the schools where principals don't do a good job. Someone up here said, "I didn't even know there were forums going on." I've heard that from parents at so many schools. So, whatever support you can figure out how to give individual principals, you're going to get results from that tenfold out of anything you do. I mean, this meeting, I really appreciate people having these kinds of meetings, but really, all, you know, as much effort as you can put into helping the individual principals. Pizza parties for those principals, we go a lot further than pizza parties here. So, that's all I have to say, and just thank everybody very much for this.
Thank you, Mr. Barr, thank you.
So, I was actually sitting there writing a long email to Courtney with all my ideas, and with C.C. and Christian and, and Sabrina and engagement, but I'll just read my ideas very stream of consciousness here. I agree with Commissioner Bondema. I think that some pizza in a child room would be, would go a really, really, really long way, because like you said, folks are trying to come home from work, and it's, it's a choice you make. Do you have dinner with the family or do you go to this meeting? And if, then who's doing dinner? So, if you can just provide dinner right there and there's a quiet room where the kids So if you can just provide dinner right there, and there's a quiet room where the kids can eat their pizza and maybe do their homework, that would really go a long way. But I totally agree with this dad that said, or maybe, you know, have pizza parties, give the budget to the principals to have a pizza party. Just ways really to think about that kind of thing. I mean, knowing that we feed people at PCAB meetings, like, people come because they know they can eat and they know that they can feed their kids, and the kids can sit in the back and do their homework, or, you know, because it's really casual and low-key. I think that goes a long way. Also, create a packet for principals so they can do maybe a five or 10-minute presentation with a PowerPoint that gives them a little quick summary to be able to give whatever, like, really fast summary of whatever information you guys are doing at the budget forums that are for district-wide. So the packets would be district-wide information, so really touching more people. I can't, off of the top of my head, think of if the district-wide budget forums are before or after the school-wide meetings. But either way, you can still provide that information at the school-level meetings to the principals, so you can touch people again that way. And just basically, you know, really engage advocacy, parent advocacy groups, like PTAs, PTOs, and have engagement reach out to them, Teachers Democracy Project, CCAC, PCAB, and say, "Give us enough lead time to get to our regular folks that we know are really engaged to say, 'Hey, here's the flyer a month in advance.'" So we have time to get it to our folks that we know are super-engaged. And then also possibly touch base with, like, pastors, rabbis, whatever, because that's another place to just hear, "Hey, be engaged in your school. Be engaged in your community. Be a part of your kid's student life and their school community by doing, going to these important meetings." And then, of course, use Commissioner Chinna's new line, "Fun with funds." I thought that was, that's our hook, right?
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Keisha Goodwin. I have attended the funding session so far, and so far, the information has been beneficial. So thank you. I do have some recommendations. If, and I'm going to start with them now. If the state allocates funds for all eligible students from pre-初级 to 12th in areas such as special needs, Title I, and ESOL to the state, then I recommend that the district distribute those funds to schools. This should happen even for a student that is eligible for one or for all of these areas. Currently, the district only give funds to school for students that are eligible in one area. I recommend that the threshold for Title I targeted remain at 30%, such as the federal guideline, that it starts there. I also recommend that for school-wide Title I, that it starts at 40% and remains there. I recommend the district to not allow charter schools to provide outside services for special needs to students. I recommend that the funds for Title I or special needs or any other services that a student receives should follow them. If they were eligible for Title I in the eighth grade, and they're still eligible for Title I in the ninth grade, that the Title I funds follow them to high school. This one is very important because I did not know that schools absorb the costs for technology. I found out from the schools in my community that they have to pay for their lab carts, that they also have to pay for the maintenance of teacher laptops and for the maintenance of the laptops on the students' lab carts. With that being said, I recommend that the district absorb technology costs, especially given that we are trying to become a 21st century school district. That burden should not be placed on schools and come out of the tight budget that schools currently have. This is all I have for now, until I attend the next funding meetings, and I will probably see you in December as well.
Thank you, Ms. Chinna.
And when it comes to advertising, knowing about these type of meetings, I did not see them anywhere. I had to look on the website, and very few people go to the website to try to find out when we are having funding sessions, and specifically this school board meeting today. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you again. We, I know we did announce this at the school board meeting.
It also goes out via social media. It goes out of Twitter and social media and city schools newsletter.
I do think it would be really helpful, though, for suggestions about other ways where families hear and connect, because clearly, for us to just keep doing the same thing we've been doing, and folks still saying that they're not hearing. So I would welcome anybody's feedback about different ways. Yeah, so I'll grant you 30 seconds. Do you have a quick one?
Is that all right, Commissioner Chinna?
Well, I know the turnout for parents to show up at the science center went over very well.
Yeah, it sure did.
And it went over well because schools promoted it.
Yep.
Schools handed out flyers. They had it on their calendars. They had it in a newsletter. And there were even incentives for the class, who said, "The parents," and then will go, "100% of the class will get a pizza party or ice cream party," or something like that. So it was the school and the principals that really pushed it through the students, and the students made the parents come out. And so that's one of my suggestions.
Thank you. We just got another new idea. We could go to the aquarium and do fishing fun. No, great idea, though. Thank you. Yes.
Hello, my name is Nicole McCann, and I'm with the ACLU of Maryland, and we are one of 13 groups that signed on to a letter sent to the school board on October 17th. That was signed by Deborah Demery of the PTA Council of Baltimore City. And I'm under the impression that we have not received a response to it, so I wanted to come here today and just read the very short letter, which pertains to the dates for budget meetings that we've been talking about. "Driven by our focus to encourage family and community engagement in Baltimore City public schools, the PTA Council of Baltimore City seeks out opportunities to help strengthen engagement processes. This year, we, along with parent-teacher groups across the city, have turned our attention to identifying ways to increase family and community partnership in city schools' budget process. The budget process is an opportunity to engage the entire school community and to deepen the school community's understanding and support for the strategic direction of the school. To facilitate engagement, we ask the city schools share a date range for the anticipated school-level budget meetings annually by the end of the first week of school, so schools can plan ahead and take these dates into consideration when shaping their school calendars. We also ask that students be required to give at least a three-week notice via at least three school-wide communication channels, whether it's phone calls, text, email, et cetera, for the exact dates of the budget meetings. The overall mission of the PTA is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. We are joined in support by organized parent-teacher groups and individual parents across the city, because no matter what the group we are affiliated with, we are all working for the children and families of Baltimore City schools." And I can leave a copy of this with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Phil Leaf. One of the things that we've found is actually there are a lot of clusters and organizations that are out there that have very large meetings of networks, of neighborhood associations, and other things, and one of the things that we've done is go, instead of us convening a meeting, we try to get on the agenda for an hour of one of these meetings that already have 50, 100, sometimes 200 or 300 people coming out, many of whom are parents and other things, and so that's one thing. The other thought that, because I actually have run into two principals in the last week, is that there's some things that are going on around construction or deconstruction of housing that have enormous impacts on class, number of students in schools. For example, City Springs is being affected by Perkins Homes, where they are no longer filling apartments, because they're going to be deconstructing the homes and other things. And so talking to some of the housing and other folks around the city who may know about either increasing in housing or decreasing in housing might sort of be able to deal with some of the pretty substantial changes, in some cases, several hundred thousand dollars, up to a million dollars, over time, that are happening, and particularly when they're going to be decreasing and then increasing again when new housing is built in, that the board may need to think of ways of holding the schools less harmless during these funding things, if it is really going to be only a one- or two-year period between deconstruction and construction and the school staying there, because you can have very large vacillations in schools. Plus, you've also been getting a lot of experience with the 21st century schools impacting school attendance, as in some of the neighborhoods, the new school is very close by, and I think providing some education and supports about how principals can plan in those schools based on information that over the last year or two, the board and certainly city schools have gotten, might be able to help that as sort of very technical information that only a limited number of principals may need. But I think it'd be very helpful to understand what the impact of the 21st century schools have been as this new school may be coming in in a year or two, and you now have several schools that have had those experiences about both how to deal with it at the school level, but it also may be something that the system and the board needs to deal with.
Thank you, Doug Lee. Not seeing anyone else moving to the table. I want to, again, thank all of you for being here this evening. Those who may not be here but are watching, hopefully you really had a chance to get an overview of the process. There will be additional times to meet and talk about the budget process, both school-based as well as district. And we thank you for the feedback. We will be using this as we move forward. Spoke, Dr. Phil Leaf. Right. Okay. Since this was not a, this was a forum and not a meeting, I'm going to just say, "Thank you very much," and we are dismissed for the evening. Have a great evening, folks.